Okay, before we begin, I'm just gonna go over a couple of ground rules. And I'm gonna read someone else on rules for tonight. It's very noisy in here, so I ask people to give courtesy to the speakers, so everyone can hear in their presentation. I'm asking you to shut off your cell phones. We don't need them ringing in the middle of the meeting or presentation. Presenters will use this mic right here on the end of the table. Any speakers who want to speak for or against the case or with information will use the podium. We ask you to come because it will be very hard to hear in here. And also, we have a sign-in sheet. If you have not signed in, I ask you to come forward, see Rachel, and she has the sign-in sheet right there. If there's a large number, I'll give a couple of minutes before I begin the cases. Good. Okay.
Hey, Alex.
Trying to think.
Actual verbiage.
Yeah, I'll read off of those, but...
What's that?
Who does Gilano go with? Oh, that goes with this one. Yeah, okay.
I really didn't read it. It was pretty lengthy.
The gentleman in a green jacket that just came in, would you please come and sign in here? Thank you. Coming out of the woodwork. Where's Matt?
The tall guy is the Bank of America.
Hmm?
The tall guy is the Bank of America.
Is that him?
Yeah.
Yeah, we should put a sign up that says, "Please sign in." Yeah, no, no, they're right.
Thank you for choosing Elijah Room.
Was this it?
Thank you for charging up. Choosing Elijah Room.
Yeah, there was too many people in that other room last time. It wasn't comfortable.
What's the date?
Excited, are you?
It's a variance. We need to know the 90 days.
Talk to Rachel a little bit.
I just had her around here about, uh, this weekend. She just turned five years. They're still coming in. You'll get this over. It's October 90 days. Very 90 days.
All right, we'll talk to Rachel after. She'll hopefully get into her first thing.
My daughter's four years old. She have... As we do, they'll all clean them up. They'll put them behind us, okay? It's her choice.
Who's Matt? Okay, thank you. Okay, before we begin tonight's hearing, first I'm gonna state the meeting was scheduled to start at 6:00. Due to, what do you call it, the sign-in, it's gonna be, it's about 6:08, and we're gonna convene the meeting at this point. Before we get into the formal meeting, I'm gonna go over... Okay. Before we begin the formal meeting, how about now? Matt, are we on?
You're on, but it's not one of the seven of them. It's only one of the seven of them.
Okay, how's this? Is this better? Okay, I'll do my best. Okay, so before we begin the formal meeting, I'm gonna go over several of the ground rules, which this board operates under. In Gardner... Uh, excuse me. Before we begin, I did that. In Gardner, three members of the Zoning Board of Appeals must be present to conduct a legal hearing. Applications will normally be heard in the sequence in which they appeared in the public notice. The board is under no obligation to adhere to that sequence. And you will see this evening, we're gonna move some of the cases around, due to the nature of the case and the possible length of the case. All hearings shall be open to the public, and no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be a hindrance to the workings of the board. An applicant may appear in his or her own behalf or be represented by agent or attorney. The applicant or his or her representative shall present the case to the board. Representatives of the city shall be heard. Abutters to the property present at the hearing shall be heard. Any other interested parties present at the hearing will be heard also. Those in opposition to the application... Excuse me. Will be heard. Sir, if you wanna move your chair and come up closer, it might make it a little easier for you. Okay, the board must render its decision regarding variance requests within 100 days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. Members of the board who are hearing the case may direct appropriate questions any time during the hearing. The board regarding special permits must conduct a public hearing within 65 days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board must render decision on special permits within 90 days after the closing of the public hearing. All three members of the board must vote in favor of the variance or special permit request for it to be granted and approved. The right to appeal the decision of the board is provided in the zoning act. The information is available in the office of the city clerk. No variance or special permit or any extension, modification, or renewal thereof shall take effect until notification from the city clerk that 20 days have elapsed after the decision has been filed in that off... Has been filed in the office, and no appeals have been filed and recorded in the registry of deeds. The burden for supporting the need for the variance or special permit rests with the applicant or the representative of the applicant. The board requests that each person identify himself or herself as to name an address before addressing the board. Sitting on tonight's hearing, there will be Mr. Mike Gary to my left, Mr. Mel Cornet... Uh, there's Mr. Mel Cornet, the far left. Uh, Mr. Randy Haglund to my right, and myself, Ray LaFon's chair. There will be movement between Mr. Haglund and myself, because we sat on different cases. The meeting will be taped. Does anyone object to the taping of this meeting? If you do, please raise your hand. For the record, it will be, uh, no one is taping. If anyone is submitting any additional information that we do not have on file, and it's new information, you must leave that information here with our clerk, Rachel, or we'll provide a copy of it within 24 hours, so we can put it in the file. Okay, and I did mention silence your cell phone, so thank you for that. And our first case this evening is that, is case 2021-80... I'm sorry, 08-01. Joanne Tavano, Zero West Broadway, Open Space Development, PID H17-7-1. At this point, I'm gonna read into the file a letter from Attorney Christine Tree, and it's requesting a continuance. It's dated October 14th, 2021. City of Gardner, Zoning Board of Appeals, City Hall Annex, Room 101. 115 Pleasant Street, Gardner, Mass. Excuse me, case 2021-08-01, Private Oversight LLC, Zero West Broadway, Open Space Development. Dear sir or madam, as you remember, I presented Private Oversight LLC, who owns Zero West Broadway, and are seeking a use variance for development of residential units at said location. Case number 2021-08-01, we are scheduled for the October 19th ZBA meeting, scheduled to start at 6:00 PM. We would like to request a continuance for this matter, so that the board may have time to conduct a site visit. Please find enclosed the, this letter, a check in the amount of $150 for the continuance and grant a continuance to the next scheduled ZBA meeting. The site has been marked as requested by the board, so I would respectfully request that the site be... A site visit be scheduled. Please note that the principal place of business for the applicant, Private Oversight LLC, is 21B West Hill Drive, Westminster, Mass. If you have any questions, please do, please do not hesitate to call. Sincerely, Christine M. Tree Esquire. So, do I have a motion from the board to move and grant a continuance? Second, okay. Any discussion?
Yes. Um, we're nearing the 90-day threshold. In Attorney Tree's letter, she's requesting a continuance until the next meeting, which is kind of, um, implies that she's granting us the, the time to make a decision. If Rachel can contact Attorney Tree and get, uh, perhaps a 60, 60-day extension or something like that, to give us time to... That would be good, granted.
Good, thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, so I'll call for all those in favor of granting the continuance to our next meeting, with the condition that Attorney Tree provide a letter requesting the continuance and, and sign. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Continuance granted. The next case before the board is Jesse Chaslin... Chason, 262 Elm Street, Access Driveway. It's case number 2021-08-02. Okay, and I need, there's a letter. Okay, the application to construct a second driveway at 262 Elm Street, Gardner, Mass., parcel ID R22-13-43, located in a single-family residential one zoning district, SFR1, is denied as it does not comply with Chapter 675-720(c) dot 2. Each parking space may have one additional access driveway for each 200 feet of frontage, provided that all such access driveways shall be at least 200 feet apart on the parking area measured from the center line of each access driveway of the city code of Gardner. Your plans show less than 200 feet from the current driveway. This case was heard on August 17th, and a site visit was conducted on August 21st and September 4th. I also need to read into the record that a letter after the regular hearing, and this case is still open, uh, this letter was received after that formal hearing. It's dated August 18th, 2021. Zoning Board, Gardner, Mass., Mr. Ray LaFon, Chairman. I am writing to express an opinion that came before the board on Wednesday night, August 17th. The issue is the driveway parking area and curb cut at 262 Elm Street. Applicant, Chason. I am the original party that notified the city engineer when this was being done by the house flipper many months ago. The city placed an asphalt curb only at the entrance, which has since crumbled and did nothing to restore the city-owned setback to the property line. That was shameful. The new owner, the applicant, now wishes to restore the curb cut. For the original house flipper, I feel that this is a clear case of it easier to ask for forgiveness than to ask permission. If he had asked permission from the city engineer, we would not be in the situation we are in now and more than likely not be brought before the zoning board. As for the current owners, they did not do their due diligence in purchasing the property from a house flipper who has no ties to the community and got his money and vanished. As for the merits of the case, my opinion is that the, that he... My opinion is he has devalued the section of Elm Street known for nice, clean, single-family homes with well-kept front lawns and shrubbery. If you let this stand, you will be encouraging other owners to have their front lawns and store camp... Front lawns and store campers' boats and seldom use vehicles on their front lawns. Even if you deny such storage, who is going to enforce it? We do not enforce many of the statutes we have on the books currently. I understand that this is a shared driveway situation, but the driveway could have been expanded in the north direction with shrubbery separating the two driveways, if that was the owner's intent. Another alternative would have been to angle, to... Would have been angled parking on the side of the house utilizing the single... Excuse me, existing curb cut. There are other houses on the street with side, with side of the house angled parking. The appropriate entrance is between two large trees, which the city owns and hopefully will not take down. This driveway and curb cut will eventually kill those city-owned trees. That is a clear safety hazard as they back out into a busy street. If you allow this permit, you are sending a message to the entire neighborhood that it is okay to pave and curb cut along the entire stretch of Elm Street. How could you possibly deny the next applicant, applicant after allowing this one? You are setting a dangerous precedent throughout the city. This is a single-family home with more than likely two vehicles. I cannot believe that there are other... There are not other alternatives for parking than on the front lawn of a nice neighborhood. This is why we have zoning, to preserve the neighborhood and maintain property values. Would you grant such a petition on Lawrence Street, Parker Hill, Comey, Edgell, Cherry? There are alternatives. Respectfully, Stanford Hartson, 109 Cherry Street, Gardner, Mass. Okay.
Mr. Chason is here.
Hmm?
Mr. Chason is here. If you want to ask him any questions or follow-up or anything.
Yeah. Ask them.
The applicant is here.
Okay. All right, is Mr. Chason here tonight? Do you have any other statements or questions you want to state or mention? Uh, please use the podium.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're gonna present? That's right, go ahead.
I apologize. I thought that was what you had said.
It's a little different tonight.
So frankly, this letter caught us both off-guard. We originally thought this letter was from someone who was an abutter that presented, um, for this at the last ZBA hearing. I still do feel like we have a valid case for this variance to be granted from the letter that I presented the board with the original application, addressing the issues in the application. Other than that, I do not have any other comments. Do you have any?
I mean, I, as far as what was mentioned in the letter, I, I don't think that the trees are going to die when we moved in. We actually had to... We got proof that the trees are very much alive and well because we had to pay a ton of money to have our pipes fixed, because the roots are coming through the pipes. Um, I also have plans to dress up that area and make it really nice-looking, um, if we are granted this. I have plans to put plants and, you know, make it look beautiful, like they mentioned that, um, you know, you want the front of your house to look nice. So that's, it definitely caught me by surprise.
Okay, well, I just, I have a question. Have you had any discussions with your neighbor, about the shared driveway of either extending it along the side to make it more acceptable to you? Or do you have an agreement with your neighbor for the shared driveway?
Yes, we, we do have an agreement where we park... Uh, currently, because we do have two vehicles, we park one in the shared driveway in the back. Unfortunately, there is not an option like that letter stated to extend it further north because the abutters did just put in new grass last summer, all in the back, so we are up against... We're as far back as possible right now. And with our shared driveway with our neighbors that we share it with, they have four vehicles? Three vehicles?
Yeah, two or four.
So there is just space for one car in that shared driveway, and then our other vehicle we park in an existing driveway behind our house. So right now, there is no other room for any other maneuvering.
Okay. Have you given any consideration, in knowing where the entryway is now, right on Elm Street into your property, of making, extending the driveway, well, your parcel here, making a passageway into your neighbor's driveway? So you would come in on your neighbor's driveway, turn left, and you'd be on your parking pad, I'll call it.
We actually have gave that consideration, and in full disclosure, we did that until we realized that this was a ZBA issue and stopped doing that. So if that would be, uh, something as a condition of this variance, I think we would be...
If we're allowed to do that?
We would be in favor of that.
On gravel or something to make it look...
Okay. All right. See, at least, I, when I was thinking of, when I posed the question about your agreement, and you say you do, uh, the, the concern could be for the board in the future if the ownership changes to your abutter. And he chooses, or he, or they choose not to honor that, or when it expires, not to renew it. And that would cause a major, I think, concern or issue for you getting onto your property?
Yes. And I, I should state, just for the record, that there is no formal agreement tied to that property. It is not even a handshake agreement. It's just something we have been working out since we've lived there. So the concern is very much valid that if they move, someone else could come in and we would lose access to our only driveway currently.
Okay, so the best case, it's sort of an informal handshake is the best you've got?
Yeah.
If anything? Uh, let's see, Mr. Gary and Mr. Haglund? Have any questions or concerns?
Not at this time.
No.
Okay. All right. So I'll ask, uh, there... Any representatives of the city to speak? Mr. Jean, the building commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe that right away is deeded.
Excuse me?
It should be in your packet. The deed should be in your packet. It should be very easy to check, but I believe it is deeded.
Okay, are there any, any abutters who would like to speak in favor of this application? There are none? Any interested parties who would like to speak in favor of this application? There are none? Anyone to speak in opposition to this application? There are none, and I did read the letter from Mr. Hartson, which is in opposition. Okay, I'll ask the board if they have any questions or concerns? Or recommendations?
Um, it's, just as a, I've got the deed here, and it's not explicitly stated. It refers to a couple of previous plans that exist. Doesn't explicitly say driveway. And for that language, you'd have to go back to the, to the plan, so... I think, um, you know, whether it's clear or not, I don't know.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Gary?
No questions.
Okay. Uh, we have done the site visit, as I stated, so I'd like to move forward to a decision on this. If it comes to...
Second.
Second? Okay. All those in favor of granting the applicant's request?
I have a discussion first.
Oh. Did I give you any?
Well, I want to discuss, you know, a little bit more that we, things that we saw at the site visit.
Okay.
I think, um, it's important to note that the existing driveway that the owners purchased was constructed right to the edge of the pavement of Elm Street. So the pavement, the new driveway goes right to the edge of the pavement. There's no grass strip that exists there. You know, I, I think in part to Mr. Hartson's comments with regard to visibility, that's one thing I always look at with a driveway, is visibility in both directions. And I think, um, I looked at that during the site visit, and it appeared to be, site distance was adequate in both directions. Other than that, I don't have any, any further questions?
Okay.
Any further comments?
Mr. Gary?
No.
No?
No.
I'll make the motion to grant the variance as, as presented.
There a second?
Yeah, second.
Okay. No conditions? Okay. Uh, just, I would, the only condition I would consider is you've got that concrete that's deteriorating and everything else, all that be cleaned up and just removed totally from the property?
Has to be cleaned up to be usable. That's, we're loose.
Yeah, okay. All right, all those in favor of granting the variance request? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, variance granted? Okay, then we'll move on to the next case. Is case... Let's see, where's my list here? Safali. Some more have come in?
Yeah.
Okay, more people have joined the meeting. We do have a sign-in sheet. If you have not signed in, please come forward and sign for us, so we can continue. Thank you. Safali, Bank of America.
I'll take the chair over.
Mr. Chairman?
At this point, I'm returning the chairman's chair over to Mr. Haglund, as he sat on the case and I did not.
Okay, sitting on this hearing is, uh, myself, Randy Haglund, his chair, Michael Gary, and Mel Cornet is the third member. It's case number 2021-08-08. It's a variance. The applicant is Frank... Frank Safali. Um, the address of the location is 492 Main Street, and it's from the Bank of America for ATM signage. And it's an application to construct a sign at 492 Main Street, Gardner, parcel ID R22-2240, and it's located in industrial one zone. And it's denied as it does not comply with the proposed, with the approved site plan for this property. Also, a variance for signage was previously granted for this property back in 2012. Representative of, uh, Bank of America. Thank you for coming again this evening. So since the last meeting, you submitted a, a revision to your application.
Correct. So as part of the last application, what we had was what's called two components. One was the freestanding sign that was located at Sherman of Main Street, and then the signage for the ATM. Just to clarify on everything regarding the application, that we're here because of the prior approval. Everything that we're going to be proposing, if this was located on a different parcel, would be permitted... be permitted by law. So now we are only talking about the signage associated with the ATM, which would all comply with the zoning code as it relates to the overall size. It is a single band wrapping the top of the proposed ATM kiosk located away from the main price shopper building.
Okay. I think at the last meeting, you discussed the three requirements of a variance. I don't think we need to go through that again, the members of the board?
That's fine.
No? Okay. So just to make it clear, the signage that has been before us tonight is the signage just associated with the ATM, the freestanding pylon sign, has been removed at this application at this time. Okay. All right, are there any representatives of the city who'd like to speak regarding this application? Representatives of the city who would like to speak with regard to this application? Are there any abutters to this property who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Are there any abutters to this property who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Are there any abutters to the property who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Are there any abutters who'd like to speak in opposition? Are there any other interested parties who would like to speak with regard to this application? Any other interested parties who would like to speak with regard to this application? And hearing none? Just for the record, state your name and your address again for the record, so it goes in the official record.
Jake Modesto. Last name is M-O-D-E-S-T-O-W. I'm with Stonefield Engineering and Design, representing the applicant. Address is 1 Beacon Street, Boston, Mass.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Anything else from the board?
Nothing.
No?
No.
Entertain a motion and to close the hearing?
Second.
Desire the board to move upon a decision?
Second.
Okay. It's an application for a decision. Discussion from the board?
No.
I think the, you know, the signage for the ATM is pretty standard, straightforward.
I agree.
It's internally illuminated. It's not, should not be an impact to the neighborhood or whatever. Okay, entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Without condition.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I suppose? None? Thank you.
Yeah, we did.
You didn't. I didn't close mine.
We did.
Huh?
We closed the hearing.
I'm gonna close it.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir.
Okay, before we begin the next case, I'll just say for the record that the Chason case, who we did run a decision on, now we have closed the public hearing on that, so that case is now closed. Okay, the next one is case, I got 202109. Yes, Serrato, okay. Is case 20210901. Variance Andy Serrato, 308 West Broadway, Starbucks signage. Application to construct two directional signs at 308 West Broadway, Garden of Mass, parcel ID R17-16-14A. Located in the commercial two zoning district, C2, is denied as it does not comply with chapter 675-970 letter D, directional signs. Directional signs may be erected near a street, driveway, or parking area if necessary for the safety and direction of vehicular or pedestrian traffic. The display area of each directional sign shall not exceed two square feet, and no directional sign shall be located more than six feet above the ground level if mounted on a wall or of a building, or more than three and a half feet above the normal ground if freestanding. Directional signs shall not advertise, identify, or promote any product, person, premises, or activity, but may identify the street name, number, and provide directions. The zoning code states that your requested use is not permitted for use in the C2 zoning And we have a second one here. Look at this one, I need to hear this involves with it too. Okay. Yeah, the second part is application to construct a five-foot-tall sign at 308 West Broadway, Garden of Mass, parcel ID R17-16-14A. Located in the commercial two district, C2, is denied as does not comply, the letter sign does not comply with chapter 675, letter A. Wall sign or individual letter signs, a wall sign or individual letter sign shall not exceed four feet in height. A wall sign or individual sign on the exterior wall of the first floor of the building shall not exceed, in area, two square feet for each linear foot of the wall, or eighty square feet, whichever is less. The length of signs of establishments occupying other than the first floor of a building shall not exceed six feet. No portion of the wall sign or individual letter sign shall project more than one foot from the face of the wall or above the wall of any building. In no case shall a sign project above a parapet wall. An establishment may divide the entire sign display permitted herein into separate wall signs or individual letter signs provided that the maximum height of each separate sign does not exceed the maximum height permitted herein, and the sum of the aggregate width and area of each separate sign does not exceed the maximum permitted herein. The zoning code states that your request is a not permitted use in the C2 zoning district. The case was amended from a special permit to a variance. So, okay, so we have Mr. Serrato, agent or attorney?
Agent.
To present.
My name's...
Please step up so people can hear, and we can hear.
Okay, my name's Andy Serrato from Serrato Signs out of Worcester. I'm here representing Hilton Displays, manufacturer for Starbucks signs. The directional signs, I'd like to withdraw that. The customer's looking to get open, so they're gonna conform to the two square feet. I'm gonna reapply for a permit tomorrow on that. On the wall sign, a few folks have driven by since our last meeting, I told you, we did apply for signs that were permitted by law. The siren is four feet tall. What they were hoping to do is to get a siren that was five feet tall. That's the round sign that's on the back of the building and over the drive-through. Aesthetically, I think it's just more proportional to the building looks. One thing, it's also for their corporate look. The issue you have is, they don't, they give up square footage by having a circle as well. The four-foot circle is about 12 square feet, the nineteen, the twenty, sorry, the five-foot circle is 19 square feet. So we meet the square footage part of it. I made a half a circle, just to try to show you proportionally how much larger it's going to be. That's just half of the sign, but that's just the square footage part of it that they're looking to gain. The inside is what's currently up there, and the outside is what they're hoping to go to. Again, this is just half the circle, just half the sign. I'm not sure if anyone got a chance to go by and look at it, but proportionally, it just doesn't look that well and well.
It's on the front page of the local paper today.
I'm sorry?
It's on the front page of the local paper today.
Yep, it is.
That's all I have for you.
Is the sign already up?
There's a four-foot sign up, not a five-foot.
Four-foot sign?
Four-foot sign was permitted, and that's what we put up.
Okay. That five-foot sign, is that standard signage for Starbucks?
Yes.
Does Starbucks have different-sized signs? Do you have, another, let me rephrase that question. Do you have other locations that have signs smaller than five feet?
Are there signs that are smaller than five feet? Yes, if the wall is smaller, then it can only accommodate something less than five feet.
Okay. So you base the size on the, the size of the wall?
Not necessarily, plus the square footage that's allowed. So the square footage, signage, the five-foot sign is allowed by square footage. Where we lose out on is that you don't allow signs that are five feet tall.
Okay. Okay, you may continue.
That's all I have for you.
That's all you have?
Three questions for a variance.
Okay. There are three questions, or three conditions for variance. How's that at the bottom? Does it derogate from the zoning ordinance? Well, that's an easy one, yes, because that's why you're here. Two, does it create or aggravate a safety hazard? You have to answer that. And then the first one is talking about hardship due to shape, topography, soil conditions, et cetera, of the property, and why the board should grant these variance requests with your information to support those three conditions.
The very last question you had, my concern is, safety portion, the sign is four feet round. The sign, the store runs perpendicular to the road, but it's hard to pick up on the sign location until you're upright on it. The larger sign would just help people identify it first before we turn in. There's no directional signs at that entranceway.
Are there any other directional signs on the, on the property, any location at all, you know, enter, exit, anything like that?
Within the property, there will be two directional signs to get people to the drive-through.
Okay. Okay. Okay, now you can go after number one. That's the hardship. That's the harder question to answer.
Of course it is. That's why you put that last. The hardship, I just believe it just, for safety reasons, the larger sign is just gonna help people identify the building quicker.
But addressing it to soil conditions, topography, and et cetera, that's part of the wording of the actual item. Does any of that enter into your definition or explanation?
No.
No?
I don't think...
Okay.
I think that topography all comes into more of a building situation than a sign.
Okay. All right, then, first of all, I'll ask my board members, Michael or Randy?
Those siren signs are installed in two locations, right?
Correct.
What is square footage of the area that that sign is mounted on?
Just the area of the ground portion.
Well, you know, you say it's, it looks aesthetically better to be a five-foot versus a four-foot. What's, you made the statement, so what's the square footage that it sits on?
Yeah, I'm sorry, hold on one second. I'll go through.
Yeah, no rush.
May I put a flashlight on it, Santa?
Yeah.
The ground area alone is 12 feet wide, and the building is 20 feet tall.
20 feet tall is a total thing, but it's on a, kind of like a parapet, or it's on a, I'm trying to, maybe open up the Garden of News and see what to...
Looking at just the background.
And I was on the back part of the building, I apologize. So that's a 12 by 12 area.
12 by 12? And then there's one on the West Broadway side of the building, I believe, right?
Correct. And I was going all the way down to the bottom on the back side of the building.
Okay, all right. Just, I mean, for the sake of the audience here, you know, the difference between a four-foot sign and five-foot sign in height, that's a 56% increase in signage.
It's 13 square feet to 19 square feet.
Yep, so it's 50%.
Yep.
It falls within the square footage that's allowed by code. The issue's the five-foot height.
Yep, yep, understand.
Yep. Well, it's up to the applicant to provide the information to support the size of the sign, et cetera, and the reason why, and not just, I guess I just look at it, it's not just because it's the standard-sized sign for Starbucks. Most corporations, et cetera, have different-sized signs for different locations, et cetera, so they're not tied into one sign. So it's up to you to provide the info for the board now to support why we need to go to the bigger sign.
I just, I just feel it's more of a safety issue for people to be able to find the location. It sits proportionally better on the building.
Any other questions at this point?
Falls within the square footage, it's allowed.
Not by eye.
Hmm?
No.
Nope?
No.
Okay, any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Okay, any abutters to the president who, president, any abutters to the president who would like to speak for this application? Any abutters to the property who would like to speak in favor of this application? I'll state it again a little clearer. Any abutters who would like to speak in favor of this application? Be it noted, none? Any interested parties who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any interested parties who would like to speak in favor of this application? Have it noted, none? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Have it noted, none? I'll ask the board members if they'd like to have any other questions.
I do. Just for clarification, Mr. Serrato, the serial signs, are they illuminated?
Yes.
Internally illuminated?
Yes, they are.
What are the hours of illumination intended to be, do you know?
I believe they're store hours.
Pardon me?
I believe they're store hours when they're open.
Store hours?
Store hour, yes.
So it's not gonna be something that's gonna be on 24 hours a day? You're not seeking that, it's outside the code anyway, so.
These are all internally illuminated?
Yes.
I do have one letter here that I will read for the record. First, Mr. Gary, do you have any questions?
No.
Reason Starbucks, 308 West Broadway, Garden of Mass. To whom it may concern, Starbucks is requesting a sign variance at the location referenced above. Wall signs are allowed up to 48 inches in height, and Starbucks is proposing two 60-inch logo disc signs. The sign above the drive-through window is the only sign, is the only sign on that elevation. The length of the wall is 76 feet 1 inch. Aesthetically, a disc smaller than 60 inches would appear to be incorrect on the wall. The sign on the rear of the building is meant to be seen by motorists traveling west on West Broadway. Since this is a multi-tenant building, and Starbucks is at the end, the 60-inch is large enough to be seen in time to decide to make the left turn across the traffic. A 40-inch disc would be more difficult to pick up while driving. Directional signs may not exceed two square feet. Starbucks directional signs are 3.23 square feet and include their logo, the copy drive-through and an arrow pointing in the correct direction. The signs could be made smaller by removing the logo, but since this is a multi-tenant shopping center, the logo is necessary to inform which businesses the drive-through is for. A literal enforcement of the code would involve substantial hardship to Starbucks as the store would be less visible to motorists, current and/or potential customers, and navigating the drive-through more difficult since Starbucks is in the end unit of a multi-tenant building facing furthest away from the intersection. Desirable relief would not cause detriment to the public good and would improve traffic safety, both on the adjacent road and in the parking lot. Desirable relief would not derogate from the intent of the code. Thus, Starbucks is requesting a variance so that the sign package may be approved as currently proposed. Thank you for your consideration and acceptance of this application. Sincerely, Joe Nalisco, project manager, Hilton Displays, 125 Hillside Drive, Greenville, South Carolina, 29607, telephone number 864-230-7841. Sell. Okay. Excuse me, any other questions or anything?
No, I have no questions.
No, I have no questions.
I would like just to go down and see that. So... Sir, we would like to view it, and come down, and set a time. What is the best time? Probably a Saturday is best for most people. Is that convenient for you, or representative of Starbucks, to be there?
I would have to check on a representative. I would, Saturday, any Saturday, or a certain Saturday?
What we'll do is, we'll leave several dates and times with Rachel, and then, you can communicate with her, and she'll tell you what we have at signs once, I mean, for hours, once we coordinate our times, and we'll schedule it. Okay, and anybody, if they're interested, you may contact the zoning office, speak with Rachel, and she'll tell you when it is. It will not be posted in the Gardener News. So... And she, you post it on the wire, too, if we're going to do a site? Okay, if, if you're familiar with what the wire is in City Hall, it's near...
Mm-hmm. And from the website, too.
Okay. And the police department also, and we post it there? No? Okay, so, you can call, that's probably the best way to find out if, if, what time and date the viewing is. Okay? So, we're going to continue this case? You may.
Would the board entertain doing something after 5:00, so they could see it at nighttime as well, or would you rather do it on a Saturday during the day? It just kind of makes sense if you see it at nighttime, because it does, sign doesn't do as much for you, when it's lit up, only your portion being illuminated.
Anytime.
The evening is, it makes some sense.
I stay away from the evenings right now, because it gets dark pretty quick.
But you're right, this, this is a time of evening may look...
Yeah.
Be a better...
I mean, and what can you make? You're the one who was working to get back.
6:30-ish?
Yeah, 6:30, and they'll be illuminated around 6:30?
Yes.
All right, so we'll give Rachel several days, and 6:30 is good for you, and for whoever.
We'll make it happen.
Okay?
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. So, this case is continued? Okay, the next case... Is case number... 2021-10-01, for variance, Alan Obi, 34 Euclid Street, to construct a deck, violates rear setback. And it says, "Application to build a deck at 34 Euclid Street, Gardner, Mass. Parcel ID M27-17-62, located in a single-family residential one zoning district, SFR1, is denied as it does not comply with Chapter 675, Article 2, Table Lot Area, Frontage, Yard, and Height Requirement of the City Code of Gardner. The table requires 20-foot rear setback, and your drawing shows only a 9-foot rear setback. Mr. Obi, agent or attorney?"
Yes.
What was that? Do you want me to get your paperwork out?
You're Mr. Obi? Yes.
Please... Please state your name, state your name and address for the record?
Alan Obi at 34 Euclid Street in God.
Thank you. And will this gentleman be presenting also?
Yes.
Yes. I'm his hired hand.
Okay, if you just want to state your name and address for the record?
Donna Obi, Sixth Gardener Place, Leominster.
Okay. All right, so if you just present the case, you know, as we have your file, but people here do not have the file, so they're not sure what you want to do. So, if you can explain it, and remember those three issues that I mentioned to that gentleman?
Right, yes.
About safety hazard, aggravate, and hardship due to shape, topography, and soil conditions. The floor is yours.
Right now, he's got a, he's got a one-foot by six-foot step, when you're coming out of the back of the building, and then it goes right down to the stairway. So, we're trying to get a landing, or a deck, and then move the stairway, so it's a little further away from, he's got a couple casement windows that stick out from the kitchen, and it impacts the doorway coming out of the house. That's the only egress he's got, aside from the front door.
I just, I did look at your drawings, and I did have some questions, because I wasn't quite sure what was happening. I'm trying to find the drawings in here. Okay, now I do have them. Okay, I'm on the second, I'll call it my second page, which is this drawing? And that's where I just, I'm looking... Can you explain that one to me?
Sure.
Okay, and you may come up here.
Those are the current property lines right now.
Okay.
This is the outline of the house.
This is...
Yeah.
Does this exist today?
That's the, that's the, uh, deck we're trying to...
Put on?
Put on, yes.
And what about, these have to, the stairway has to be included also?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're 13 feet, 13 and a half feet?
Right, to the edge of the proposed stairway, yes.
Okay, we're 16, no, we're not. We're 11? Okay, and what, this measurement right here?
This measurement is the existing house.
Okay. All right, so you want to construct this deck right here?
Yes.
And the stairway also?
Yes.
Okay, and so, this is where, as I read your short...
That's where the deck corner would be.
This is only nine feet?
Nine feet, three inches.
Okay. Right here. Okay. So, this will be entrance and egress to the deck? Anything going into the house?
Yeah, there's a small...
This is the door?
Small porch right near the porch.
Okay.
That should be the door right there.
Yep. Now, let me ask you a question, then. What room is here?
That's the kitchen.
That's the kitchen?
Bedroom, kitchen, and a small pantry on the side.
And what is?
This is the bedroom here, along with that bedroom. Living room is over here.
Okay, and this little spot is, what is?
It's just a entranceway, breezeway.
Okay, it's just a breezeway?
Yeah.
Okay. Have you, have you constructed any of it yet, or not?
No.
Okay. I know, I'm going to ask some questions, but I ultimately want to go down and see this, and what I would ask is, if you could mark it, and it does not have to be fancy, it can be a rock, it can be a stick, you know, a little piece of orange tape, I just want, I'd like to see these points right here. And also, if you could just mark your property line right here?
There's a fence there.
Okay, now, to the rear?
Yeah.
What about you to the rear down here? Another property, or?
It extends out to the corner.
Okay.
It's not a house there, isn't it?
But, what's the distance?
Yeah, it's just enough, the fence goes down to another property.
So, what's the distance from here to here? How much?
60 feet.
60?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's an odd-shaped line.
On this side of your property line right here?
It's a paved parking lot for the neighbors.
Okay, and what is the distance to the parking lot, or?
Uh, parking lot's right up to the fence.
All right, so it's paved right up to your line? Okay. All right, we'll see that, you know, when we come out, but I'm going to ask my questions, unless you have anything else you'd like to add at this point? Nope? Okay, any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Be it known, there are none? Any abutters to the property present who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any abutters to the property present who would like to speak in favor of this application? Be it known, none? Any interested parties who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any interested parties who would like to speak in favor of this application? Be it known, none? Anyone in opposition? And, let's see, and board members, any questions?
No.
Randy?
Stairs that go down near driveway?
Yes.
Okay. How, I'm looking at an aerial map on Google Earth right now. How, how far would you estimate back of your house to the nearest house? I mean, there's, by the aerial view, it doesn't look like there's anything directly in back here, it looks like it's more...
There's a garage.
More at 11 o'clock, or something.
There's probably 20, 30 feet to the house.
Yeah, to the next house, huh?
That's, that's the house, right there, is West Street.
Yep. Okay. Are you planning to enclose this deck?
No.
Or is it going to just, you'll have your railings, and that's it?
Just a standard railing, yeah.
Any illumination?
No.
Well, there'll be a light outside, yeah.
Right outside, yeah.
How high off the ground is it?
I'd say about 5 and 1/2, 6 feet.
I think it's higher than that, probably closer to 8.
Wow, okay.
You know, coming off the house. That's 7 or 8 feet, I would guess.
Yeah, well, maybe, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, Randy?
No.
Michael?
No, we've got to do the three questions.
Hmm?
We need to do the three questions.
Okay, now, the three questions.
Sure.
Of, does it derogate from intent of the ordinance? I guess, yes, you're here.
Right.
Do you create or aggravate any safety hazard by constructing this?
I don't think so, no.
Okay. Now, due to shape, topography, soil conditions of the land, et cetera, that why you need to put it here, and violate the ordinance, and that would cause significant financial hardship.
That's the only door on the house on that side of the building, so it has to be there. There's no other place to put it.
From your house, distance to the property line on, I'll call it the right side?
In the front? There's a porch in the front, and there's this 5 feet of stairway, right down to the sidewalk.
So, there's not enough room to construct a deck or anything on that side?
Nothing there.
Not enough room to construct a deck up here?
No, that's 5 feet on that side, I think. It's pretty tight on that side.
Okay. You could construct the deck here.
That's off a bedroom?
All right, so this is a bedroom, I'm just confirming.
And there's a garage there.
Okay, okay. All right, any questions based on that?
Drive under the garage?
What's that?
Drive under the garage?
Yes.
That explains why it's so tall.
Okay. Any other questions, or anything?
No.
All right. Mr. Obi, we'd like to come down and view this?
Yes.
So, we're going to continue your case, because we'll report back to the information that we see when we do view it.
Okay.
What would be a good time, and we can't do it the same night, we go to the other one? What would be good for you, Randy?
Saturday, which one?
Hmm?
A Saturday.
Saturday?
A Saturday, that's better.
How about this Saturday?
Okay.
I can't.
You can't?
No.
The following Saturday?
I can do the following Saturday.
Okay, how's the fall, not this coming Saturday, how's the following Saturday?
All right. I'm going to have a problem.
Hmm?
I'm going to be out of the state. I can stake it out for him, and he can...
Well, that's okay, and you could be there.
Yes.
Okay?
It's Halloween Eve.
Hmm?
It's Halloween Eve. We won't come in costume, it's okay.
Yeah, guaranteed no costumes. You still for 6:30?
No.
5:00?
On a Saturday.
Oh, Saturday, 9:00 in the morning?
Yeah.
9:00 in the morning, okay?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, Rachel, if you can?
The 30th at 9, did you say?
Yep. What's the date, the 30th?
30th.
The 30th it is?
9:30.
9. Okay. So, I'll ask if you have any further questions or comments you'd like to make before you leave, and...
No, there, so there would be a contingency, I have to go to another meeting?
There would be what, sorry?
There'd be another meeting after this one? I'll have to go?
Yes, there will be, there'll be a decision meeting.
Okay.
Because your case will still be open, so I'll have to close the hearing, and then we'll vote.
All right.
Okay.
Okay? Are you...
November 6th will be the next meeting.
Okay. That brings up a question now for me. Did you have a construction schedule lined up?
No.
Of when you want to start this, and have it completed?
Well, it's getting a little late in the season now.
As soon as possible, right?
Well, I don't know, when you going to do it?
It looks like we're a little short this year, I don't know.
Probably spring.
Probably some lumber may go down, too.
Yeah, that too.
All right, so you're not planning to have it constructed in four weeks?
No.
Okay. All right, so we'll be there Halloween Eve at 9:00 in the morning?
Okay.
And we'll go from there, so this case will be continued. And I'll just ask for a quick vote on that. All in favor of continuing this case?
Second.
Any further discussion? Vote, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Continued approval, and you may leave, and we'll see you on Saturday.
All right. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay. Well, here, yep, here we go. Okay, the last two cases, and we'll take them one at a time. Is case number 2021-08-03, variance, Harbor Classic Homes, 0 Clark Street, Open Space Development, parcel ID M32-6-10. That's the case we're going to start with first, okay, Mr. Campabasso?
That's fine.
Okay. I'd just like to make a comment here, too, as, you know, this case, or these cases, can generate a lot of comments and activity, so I'm going to state again, you know, please give your attention to these presenter, and we'll try to keep it quiet, and sometimes these cases get a little emotional, and we'll do our best to keep it down. And if not, then people will be asked to leave. So, we want to give due diligence for everyone, and the opportunity to speak uninterrupted. Okay. Now, I'll read the first one. Application to construct and access for the proposed open space residential development at parcel ID M32-6-10, Clark Street Entrance, located in General Residential 3 Zoning District, GR3, and Single Family 1 Residential Zoning District, SFR1, is denied as it does not comply with Chapter 675, Attachment 1:1, Table of Use Number 10, Open Space Residential Development of City Code of Gardner. The zoning code states that your use requested is a not permitted use in the GR3 in the SFR1 zoning district, zoning district. I'm just also going to make another comment. We're talking here about a roadway. We're not talking tonight about the actual housing project. That will go under the jurisdiction of the Planning Board, if this board approves the two variance requests. So, if there are a lot of questions about how many houses, how big they are, lot sizes, et cetera, that is not for discussion this evening, and I will not allow that conversation to be held. We're talking about, I'll call them driveways, or the entrance, the roadways, that's all that's on the table tonight. Okay, is that clear? Okay, thank you. Mr. Campabasso, state your name, and...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Peter Campabasso, I'm an attorney with a office at 3 Park Street in Leominster, My name is Peter Campabasso, I'm an attorney with a office at Three Park Street in Leominster, Mass. I appear tonight on behalf of Harbor Classic Homes. Uh, Ronald Corview and Laurel Adams, uh, managers, members of Harbor Classic. Um, by way of, of background regarding the requests, um, we have been involved in different discussions with, um, the Planning Department. Um, we have gone to technical review and at the technical review hearing, um, this issue came up on whether a variance was needed, uh, to gain access to the land. I did file a response, um, which I hope the board did have a chance to review. I would like that, make that a part of the record and instead of reading it verbatim, I'll just highlight the points. Uh, first and foremost, I, I disagree with the, um, determination that a variance is needed uh, because what we're talking about is a residential use. And if you look at the table of uses, um, under residential uses, um, the proposal is for single-family residential homes, which is permitted in the, in the Single Family Residence One District, the Rural Residence Two District, and the General Residence Three District. Why this case is unique is the majority of the land is, um, behind the homes and is zoned RR Two, it's, it's in an RR Two District, um, which allows single-family homes, but also allows by special permit, um, dimensional offsets for the lots. Um, so that in my conversations and in my review, they're not proposing to use the land for something that's not permitted. It really boils down to, um, dimensional regulations. And I think if you look in your bylaw and you review the table of uses and you review the special, um, the open space, uh, special permit proposals, the open space falls under reg-, uh, procedural dimensional regulations. So it's, it's, it's not really certain that a variance is needed. However, um, the roadways do travel through a small portion of the, uh, Single Family Residential One District and a small portion of the rural, uh, the General Residence Three District. I did prepare maps. Um, I didn't prepare, we had the engineer prepare maps, excuse me. Um, we did bring several copies if they want to be handed out to the, uh, general public that's here, the residents that are here. Um, as it, as you can see from the Clark Street, uh, blowout, um, the zoning lines are drawn. And what's unique about this lot, um, number one, the shape is such that it's, it's, you can't even call it a, a hammerhead lot, it's just the mid- ninety-six to ninety-seven percent of the land lies in the, uh, RR Two Zone. A very small portion of the land, um, maybe a hundred feet of frontage and maybe a hundred foot depth is in the GR, uh, the SFR One District and the GR Three District. So that the area impacted is very small, it might be, um, somewhere in the vicinity of eighty feet, uh, that we would be actually needing a variance for. And I think if you look at the Clark Street blowout, what I tried to do was draw the zoning lines so that the board could see it because under the bylaw, you are allowed to extend the, um, less restrictive district fifty feet into the more restrictive district. Um, and by doing that, a portion of the, a very small, a much smaller portion on Clark Street, uh, it does push most of the roadway so that the use would be allowed. We, we would be talking a very small, uh, portion of the entrance, um, for the variance. Um, as far as the elements of the variance are concerned, again, the lot shape is such that if you look at this particular lot, it is the only lot that is zoned RR Two. All of the lots around it are zoned either SFR One, I think GR Three, and I'm not quite sure of what the, uh, classification of the, um, water, the surface water districts are, but this particular lot is the only lot affected because you can't get to it except going over these small strips of land. So that does make the determination a substantial hardship to the applicant. As far as the other elements are concerned, this process, um, there would not be a, a detriment or, or, or to the public good, if you will. And the reason I say that is in order for this project to move forward, the applicants have to go through a special permit process as well as a subdivision process. So during both of those, um, procedures before the Planning Board, uh, there will be public hearings, there will be peer review, there'll be ample opportunity for members of the public to come and express their views, their concerns, the issues, so that they can be discussed and addressed. So that by granting the variance, you're not allowing the use per se and you're not, um, you would not be causing, um, the proposal to create a substantial detriment to the, or a ha- a hazard to the neighbors. And lastly, um, I believe the requirement is for, um, derogating from the intent of the bylaw. Um, again, if you look at the table of uses, um, the open space residential development is a permitted use by special permit before the Planning Board. So we would in fact be using the land with an allowed permitted use provided the special permit was, was allowed by the Planning Board. Short of that, um, the, the project could not go forward as an open space residential development. It would proceed as just a, a traditional residential development. Um, but one last point, the, the, the land itself, if you're familiar with the land, it's hard to determine why the zoning line, um, fell the way it did. Because a strong argument could be made that this was spot zoning in the sense that this land was, this zoning line was put in such a manner where the best use of this land because of the topography, because of the wetlands, because of where it's located, uh, situated to the, to the water supply that's out there, would be to allow for an open space cluster development to keep the lot sizes, um, smaller, keep them away from sensitive areas. But because of the location of the zoning line, using the land for its, its best use is prevented. Um, that's why I think, um, it is a strong case to allow the variance. If the board is so inclined that a variance is needed, um, I think the, the, the three elements can easily be met.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Campabasso.
Yeah.
Uh, first of all, I'll ask my board members if they have any questions at this point.
Not yet.
Not yet?
No, not yet.
And I will just state for the record, uh, the document that Attorney Campabasso is, uh, speaking of that was submitted to the board recently, we do have a copy if there are people interested. Uh, it's available in the office of the city clerk, uh, I'm sorry, in the zoning office. Rachel can provide it, so you can read pretty much, uh, what he has just spoken about, uh, the three issues, et cetera. Also, we have another document which we received, uh, on the nineteenth and I'll just say this, from a Nate Gallio- Gallioda who is unable to be here tonight. Uh, it is two, almost two pages, it's over two pages typed. I am not gonna read it tonight, the document is available if you wanna look at it tonight. I will let you look at it, the board will let you look at it, you can read some of it or all of it. But if you want a copy of it, you can also pick that up at the zoning office, but it's pretty lengthy. And, um, and I'll move on from here. So are there any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Mr. Jean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I did get a chance to read Mr. Campabasso's letter today and, um, it's a lot to read, it's a lot to take in, lots to digest. I don't, I don't necessarily have an opinion on whether or not the variance is needed. I guess my opinion is still that it is needed at this point, but, um, if I had a chance to digest that information a little longer, I may have a different opinion. Um, I'd like to say that I am in favor of the project. I think the, there is definitely a, a problem with new housing in Gardner. I have a very close friend who's been trying to buy a house for a long time and he's not able to do that. So I think it's something that is needed and the tax revenue would be huge to the residents and the city. Um, I mean, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other representatives of speak, representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Any other representatives, representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Okay, any of butters to the property? Yes, sir?
I had one more point.
Okay.
Before we open it up to the residents.
Fine.
I think one thing that the board needs to understand and one of the points that I have made to Mr. Karen in our discussions, if the Planning Board allows the open space residential special permit, then the use would be allowed and the dimensional variations would be allowed so that we would not need a variance. Um, I understand what's at play and I think what, uh, might make sense is if the board is so inclined that, um, a variance could be, could be allowed with the understanding that the Planning Board has to issue a special permit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are you scheduled to go before the Planning Board in the near future?
Um, we are in the process of completing the, so as I understand it, based on my discussions with Trevor Borogad, there will be two applications. One is for a preliminary subdivision plan. The second will be for the open space residential special permit. And the two applications will proceed before the Planning Board, um, simultaneously.
Preliminary subdivision plan, it's just a standard subdivision?
Well, it'll, it'll-
Not necessarily open space?
The open space residential development process requires that you submit both the traditional grid and then the open space, uh, proposal, so, yes. Uh, and those plans are in the process of being prepared. Um, I'm not exactly sure when, but our, our hope is that we will be submitting these plans within the next couple of months.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just, uh, add this as the, the letter I referenced, uh, Mr. Gallioda. It is in opposition, so I'll just mention it again. Okay, is there any, are there any butters who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any butters who would like to speak in favor of this application? Be it known, none? Any butters, are there any interested parties who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any interested parties who would like to speak in favor of this application? Be it known, none? Any butters who would like to speak in opposition to this application? And I'll, I'll just restate my comments. We stay to the travel way, not anything that's going before the Planning Board or the construction of the houses. This is just allowing the travel way entering, okay? All right, sir, you had your hand up. Yes, you. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, uh, my name's Gerald Poria, I live at three twenty-three Clark Street and I own two hundred feet of property on the, uh, left side of the proposed, uh, roadway. And I'm in, uh, strong opposition to it, uh, due to traffic and other things for other boards, what I'm gonna talk about at a future time. So I'll leave it at that right now.
Okay, thank you, sir.
My name is Lee Bradley, I live at one oh five Brookside Drive. Uh, my big concern is the water and the wetlands 'cause every spring we have problems with water in that area, all the time. Springtime, winter time, it all, it either goes down the brook and comes into people's backyards and then it comes down the front of, uh, Brookside Drive and it makes a mess. The other thing too is the traffic. I know for a fact about ten, fifteen years ago, there was a traffic study done with volume and it was said then in this forum, I believe, I know, Ray, you were at that meeting, that the, the traffic for Brookside Drive, Clark Street, Century Way, everything in that area was, was overtaxing the roadways. I don't know, um, if you were here at the time, if you remember that, but every one of the, the fire, the police, the highway, everybody came out in opposition to that particular, development at that time. I don't know what's changed other than they paved the road. But the volume, the speeding, I mean, I know the police are taxed right now, they don't have the manpower to have somebody sitting on there all the time, but I got people blowing through the stop signs at Century Way and Brookside Drive on camera all the time that I'm always complaining about.
Well, especially if there are some issues like-
Century Way and Brookside Drive about, you know, traffic and speeding, et cetera, that should be conduct, uh, communicated to the police department?
And it has.
Um, okay.
Okay, but it, my problem is the traffic and the water. And I'm in strong opposition to that happening.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'm gonna say so, the, the work Clark, I mean, it's, it's a mess right now.
Your name and address, please, sir?
My name's Mr. Malanton, I live on one fifty-eight Clark Street. I don't know where you people live, go sit in your yard and see how far, how much traffic you get a day. It's incredible, incredible how bad it is. And the water and the animals that these people are gonna destroy.
Sir.
The, the way the world is today, we cannot have this no more.
Excuse me?
We have to make a stop to this right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this application?
Hope to discuss that. I hope you guys can sit with it.
Uh, Eric Ulet, one nineteen Brookside Drive, uh, I'm actually Mr. Bradley's neighbor, N X R D, I'm corner Century Way, Brookside Drive. Uh, I've been there for twenty-three years and I wanna echo the same, uh, things that he was saying, uh, with the traffic, um, the flooding issues that we have, uh, the volume of traffic. Um, like he stated, there was a study done about fifteen years ago. We tried to research it, but none of the departments seemed to have this on file. Um, highway, DPW, water, sewer, police, fire, and at the time, everybody said, no, that our roads out that way could not handle the volume. I believe at that time, they had wanted to put in a hundred retirement homes in the same area that they're looking to put these houses in and, uh, they just said it could not handle the volume of people and services that were needed. So just voice my opinion, I'm against it all, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ulet. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition, ma'am?
Hi, Robin Ledger, sixty-nine Clark Street. I'm the house, um, on the east side of the reservoir. Uh, first, um, the lawyer was able to speak to the best use of the land, which was not part of the discussion tonight. Um, and the city worker talks about a friend who has a desire to build on the land, which is not part of the discussion tonight. Um, I am at the beginning of the traffic, which, and I've been on that land for sixty-six years and the land on the east bank belonged to my great-grandfather and my grandfather. So I have a hundred and twenty-five years of interest in this property. I am also a professor of nursing and a member of the Alliance of Nurses for Healthy Environments. And the traffic issues, as well as the water table and the environmental issues, will be brought forward.
Those items will be addressed by the Planning Board.
What?
Those items will be addressed by the Planning Board.
Correct.
And regarding the traffic, and I know it, it's an issue because Clark Street is a busy street, but really, we don't know the amount of traffic that will be at this point, will be generated if that project is approved. And that's where the Planning Board needs to be involved and then conduct a traffic study. study, because we're really looking at the small pieces and then really allowing it to connect. That's what the board here is looking at. I think there's some valid concerns if there is traffic, but we have departments, the police department, if there's issues, they should be reported to them and let them investigate. But if this project does go forward, then you will all have the opportunity to be at a meeting just like this and express your views and try to have facts if you come in, not just, there is a lot of traffic. If you can validate that, and that will support your case even better, but that all comes under the jurisdiction of the planning board, okay?
We look forward to those meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this application?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Chief.
I'm Neil Erickson, 375 Raymond Street in Gardner. And I... Correct me if I'm wrong, but the issue that you folks are going to be acting on is a permit to put the road in. So the road comes with the traffic that comes with... We know there's an estimate of number of homes that will be built in that area. Traffic, certainly one of the things in my ballpark. It's a heavily congested area, as we all know, and I'd just like to voice my opposition to increasing that volume in that area.
Thank you, Chief. I understand your position, and traffic just is a natural thing that falls out when you speak about a subdivision, et cetera. But we're just trying to keep it in, I'll call it the proper arena. And I'll go back on my statement. If there is traffic, then have your facts lined up for the activity as best you can. And actually, you can request, and I'm sure, Counselor, that their traffic study will be completed based on the number of homes when the planning board looks at that.
Yes, obviously, yes. And the traffic study will be peer-reviewed by engineers for the town.
Okay. Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure if you were leaving.
Jeff Landry, my wife Tina Landry. We are, again, traffic is...
35.
35 Clark Street. Again, traffic is definitely an issue. There's been several accidents right in front of our own house. I mean, we're on a straightaway where we live. They've hit three of the telephone poles. They took out... Twice, they've taken out the fence that was in front of my house. We now didn't even put it back up the second time.
They've even taken out a no parking sign on the opposite side of the road.
Yeah, they were coming the opposite direction. So those are some of our issues.
The other issues that we've had is there's bald eagles that have been spotted in the area. So there's a concern that if they're nesting there, if whatever trees are taken down to put this driveway in or road in disturbs them, this is the first time they've been spotted in the area that I know of.
And then some of the other issues that we have is that is our water supply. It's the main water supply for Gardner. Looking at some of the other communities around, when they have these algae blooms during the midsummer, when the heat of the summer, usually it's caused from runoff from residential properties, and they're going to be putting those right next to the...
Well, see, that's not under our jurisdiction. You know, that's going to be the planning board.
Okay. So... I don't know, is there anything else that goes on there?
And I think you have some very valid concerns, but you should, if it does go forward, you should go and be at the planning board meeting.
Another one, another thing that we also have is even just the amount of trash that gets tossed out on the side of the road every day. I mean, we have to pick up stuff every day already.
And the needles, not just trash, but it's also needles all around the Pearlie Brook.
Scratch tickets, needles, all that stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're opposed.
Thank you. I'm going to state that this board is going to view... Sir, you may come up to the podium if you wish.
I haven't lived here that long, but I can say the development of back, like Leo Drive, and everyone knows who I'm talking about, it's just created so much more traffic. And they've only added probably 20 houses. So, and the big issue I see right in front of my house, I live on Clark Street, is the trash. It's absolutely out of control. So, I mean, I'm not saying these people are going to litter, but, I mean, it just seems to be a common trend.
Yeah.
And I've had two major accidents in front of my house this year. I actually had one of them on my Ring camera. It was a motorcycle accident, so I don't think it's a very good idea.
Okay.
What's your name and address? Dan Ram, 477 Clark Street. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I know it's hard not to talk about traffic, because you're talking about a number of homes, and I think you're doing a great job of, you know, trying to keep it down. But I still state, be ready, if it goes forward, to bring that information to the planning board and be ready with that. And I mean, I probably, the board could probably hear, "Stop all the traffic" conversation, but you're here, you want an opportunity to speak a little, as long we stay within certain parameters. I'll let you talk a little bit about the traffic and stuff, but only like the traffic, nothing else, and just give you the opportunity to speak briefly. Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, Scott Cudaro, 380 Clark Street. So I, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, you're trying to come in off of Century Way?
Yes.
And you say that's the only access?
You may look at a drawing that he's got here if you'd like to see that.
I have them. I'm just clarifying, sir. You say that's the only way?
No, I didn't say that, no.
Oh, okay, okay. So I don't really see the concern or changing of any kind of zoning if that's not the only way. You say that's the best use of the property, and you're trying to get the best use. Well, the rest of us have the best use. We bought our homes. We did not buy our homes with other houses behind them for a reason.
You're wondering from what this case is here.
No, sir, I don't believe I am.
You've got to stay within that parameter, I ask.
So if you let me continue, sir, I will get to the point. You're going through a residential area. You're speaking of, and, you know, they kind of varied off to get to their point, too. But you're going through a residential area, cutting through a neighborhood that is already existing, to create another existing area that didn't exist when we bought our homes.
Okay.
I don't think it's necessary. I don't see any kind of extra creativity that you have looked at. I'd like to see more studies before you make any decision. There's no reason to cut through a street through a residential area without further approval to go through any kind of other design. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to make this statement, and I hope you're going to agree with Attorney Campabasso. The board is going to go down and view that, the locations that are on these maps, and probably ask for some pointing out certain things, the entries, the boundaries, et cetera, on both locations. Generally, I open it up to, people can attend the viewing, but they will have to have permission from the landowner to enter if we all go onto the property. The landowner will have to give permission. If it's denied, you cannot go on. You can be there, but you're not allowed to speak and give any information at that point. You just observe. And we do this periodically if it's an issue that people really want to know, but it's more of a learning experience for you to see where the roadway is, the markings. You talked about the small pieces of parcel of property, so we would do that. But I will say, I'll ask you, Attorney Campabasso, if you would allow, and I'm not asking for an answer, they can come on the property. If they come down, they can, and if it's denied, then you would have to stay on city property on the roadway. Other than that, you would have to, you could go, but in orderly fashion, and just do that. But that will be up to the attorney and the property owner. And I ask you to check with zoning. Rachel will tell you when we're going and the time. So at that point, the decision will be made by the property owner. I'm not asking for that for today, okay? All right. So Randy, Mike, do you have any further questions?
Not at this point. There's some more people in the audience.
We have more. Sorry, didn't see you.
I live at 323 Park Street. We've met before, back when National Grid was building behind my home. I ask that you guys be very diligent about letting a road go in where it's going. Promises are made, things are said, things aren't going to happen, but they do. You know, they say they're going to protect the wetlands. They say they're going to take care. You allow a road, they're taking down trees. They're taking down, you know, what's there to protect the wetlands. Trees do protect the water in a sense. There are bald eagles in the neighborhood. There's actually three of them. There's, right now, there's a little yearling, I believe. He doesn't have his colors yet, but he's very beautiful. And if you're ever out walking around Pearlie Brook or down in that area, they are there, and they are nesting down in this area. So them out there, they're going to be clear-cutting trees. Once they access a road, they can go in there and they can do what they want to do. We can say they're not going to, but they're going to do what they want to do once they start the access. Things need to be really clear, and we need to protect what's there. It's not just about another 100 houses. 100 houses can go in other areas. These are, this is our waterway. This is where, we all live in this area. We want to protect what we have. We want to see the beauty of what's there. They're going to build 100 houses, they're going to access the road. What's the view going to be from when you're coming around, walking around Pearlie Brook? It's just not going to be the same anymore. And I get, you know, building houses and things like that.
That's just a subjective statement.
It is, it is.
And all we're talking about, memorized as, is the roadway?
It is a road.
To allow use.
Like I said, once you start a road...
Blacktop or anything affecting the abundant properties.
Yeah, but once you start a road...
Or anything like that. If anything, it'd be blacktop. That's about it.
I get that.
You know, that's where we have to stay with this conversation.
And I understand that. And I'm just asking, I'm just asking to...
The planning board. That's where you really can voice your concern and opinion.
Oh, I will. I'm very vocal, very vocal. And like I said, I deal with the traffic every day. I bought my house 20 years ago. I've watched all these projects go in down below. Just please be vigilant. When a road goes in, everything else comes from that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else, sir?
I'll thank the board for giving time to address this matter.
Your name?
My name is Robert Chickwin, and I live directly across from where this proposed road is going to be, or they would like to put it. I know you don't want to hear about the traffic. You don't want to hear about the crime rate. You don't want to hear about the pedestrian traffic, the plowing, the topographical wetlands or reservoirs. How about the drainage? Where this road's going in? I'm very familiar with it. I don't need permission to go on it. I grew up there. Been there my whole life. And didn't build the house there because it was wet. And I also had a question. What is this 50-foot offset on this map?
What is your question?
On Clark Street, it says general residential, single-family residential. And it says on the bottom of the page, in red, it says 50-foot offset to zoning district, right?
Let me see. Sir, I can ask a question?
On the western side, western side of Clark Street. Where my house is.
Right here is the 50-foot offset.
I'm questioning, Mr. Chickwin. Red. What is this? Is that the... What is that?
If I may...
You may. Oh, this line here?
This one here. What is this? What is that? Does that mean...
And I'm going to defer that question to Mr. Jean, if you can assist.
Possibly. Mr. Rose, the proposed road. And he got Clark Street. What is this, 50-foot?
Nothing.
My house is only 19 feet away from the road. How do you look at 50 feet?
Counselor, I'll ask the question. What he's referring to, that being the 50 feet that you can encroach?
Yes, the municipal bylaw...
They would be allowed to, they would be allowed to encroach them with...
Let's get his attention.
Because of the less, because of the less restrictive district.
Mr. Chickwin, he's going to also give an answer to that.
I think I got my answer.
Yeah.
You're saying you can encroach into my living room, into my bedroom? Because that's where my house is.
No one has any intention of crossing the road. You're not approaching by structures or roadway or what have you. It's just for purposes of demonstrating to the board and to the members. Because the bylaw does allow you to expand based on the zoning line districts by 50 feet, I just wanted to put that line on there so that people could see it.
Yeah, so you're not changing zoning lines? It just...
No.
It's like a little buffer zone that can move?
Correct.
50 feet?
Correct.
Wait, can I address? Can I address the chair?
Lines don't change. Bedrooms are safe, whatever.
Can I address the chair once again? Can I continue? Well, it's 50-foot. They have logged this area numerous times. When they come out, they dig up my whole field because they can't make the turn. So this is what I'm worried about. Second issue on this map, and my mother gave me permission to represent her on this point. My mother is Irene Chickwin, who lives at 291 Clark Street. This is direct to Butter. And her property line doesn't go straight in. If you look at your map, it goes off to the left. And I'm questioning on the northeast side, where it comes right up to the road. You follow me?
No.
Okay.
Why don't you come right here, and you can point this out to us?
Yes. No, no, right here, okay? Now, this is the proposed road. They want to put a road in. This is her property line. Right here. Okay? Wait, do you... What is, what is the easement to the road? I mean, they're going to be right on the line. I mean, does she have any...
But that's going to be a planning board issue?
Okay. Well, that's a good...
But I know, I know what you're saying, but that will be before them.
Well...
And that, this will all have to be laid out, you know, the engineers will be in there, and if there's violations of property lines, that's going to impact whatever decisions made or how it proceeds, if it does.
As a general question for the zoning board, how far of an easement is the road to someone's property line?
How far of an easement?
Yeah. They can go right on your pin?
I think what he's trying to say is, is there a setback for a roadway?
Right.
I'm not aware of one for our zoning. And I think the layout is always proposed on 50 feet line.
Correct.
With the actual pavement being something smaller than that. This is 24 feet.
Yeah, the 50 feet is...
The layout width.
Basically touching her property line. And the other thing is, I don't know how easy or how often you guys feel like you can change residential zoning laws, but I don't think this is a proper application. I'd like you to reconsider. I am opposed to it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You did your homework all over there, Mr. Chickwin. Thank you. Okay, anyone else who would like, sir?
Dana Heath, 167 Acadia Road. I know that we're talking traffic study, and I was just wondering if there's a way to go ahead and put sidewalks onto that traffic study.
I'm just asking you to speak up a little bit.
I was wondering if we can put sidewalks onto the traffic study. I know, like, sidewalks aren't looked at in suburban neighborhoods. But if you're talking about bringing in more traffic, I go up and down Clark every day, and there's nowhere for these kids and joggers and bikers to go.
Yeah.
Which, more cars, there are going to be more joggers, bikers. Which more cars, there are going to be more joggers, bikers. And I know a lot of kids in the area, so that's just something I would, I ask to be looked at on top of the traffic study.
All right, sidewalks, et cetera, is not under the jurisdiction of this board at this time. I'll repeat again where that's going to happen.
I got you.
If it goes...
I just wanted to go ahead and say that out loud.
The planning.
And say hi, Rachel.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Okay, I'll ask the board members if you have any further questions at this point. Michael? No. Okay. Mr. Campabasso, as I stated, the board will come down. But I'm going to read the next case and that, your presentation may be shorter because a lot of the facts will remain the same. Okay? So an application, the second one, case 2021-08-04, variance. Application to construct an access for the proposed open space residential development, M37-21-42, Century Way entrance. Located in a general residential 3, zoning district GR3, is denied as it does not comply with Chapter 675, Attachment 1:1, Table of Uses Number 10, Open Space Residential Development of City Code of Gardner. The zoning code states that your requested use is not a permitted use in the GR3 zoning district. And, excuse me, it says, "Case was opened in September hearing and continued to tonight for the lack of information at that case. Email received against this case from Mr. Gail Letter, 182 Fernwood Drive." And that's the letter that I referred to right here. And like I said, it's available for anyone who wants to take a look at it. Okay, so I'll open it up again to you, counselor.
Members of the board, my name is Peter Campabasso. I'm an attorney with offices at 3 Park Street, Leominster, Mass. I appear on behalf of the applicant, Harbor Classic Homes. Again, Ron Corview, Marle Adams, the manager members of the company. And again, as far as our view of this aspect is concerned, the, the land entrance off Century Way, again, the proposed use is for single-family residential homes, which are permitted in all three of the residential districts, if you will. If the board is so inclined to determine that a variance is needed, again, I think that the criteria for the variance are met in the sense that the lot shape and the roadway entrance is such that it's very small, it's narrow, it's only approximately 80 feet one angle and, and I think 70 feet another angle. And this also has the same entrance in the sense that it's very narrow and it's, it's essentially blocked by the zoning line so that the only way you can get to that area is over this land. The process that will be required doesn't derogate from the zoning bylaw in the sense that a residential development could go forward, but the open space residential development can only be approved by special permit from the planning board. In the process that will be required between the preliminary subdivision and the definitive subdivision and the special permit, there'll be plenty of public hearing, plenty of peer review. I appreciate the concerns that are being expressed here. It's typical when any type of development is proposed in any community, there are always impacts that have to be viewed, reviewed, and addressed. However, in order for the proposal to move forward, we have this dilemma of do we need one or don't we need one? And I think that, again, the open space residential development is a permitted use in this residential zone and, as well as a permitted residential use. So if the board is so inclined that a variance is needed, it would make sense if, if the board was more comfortable to have a provision in there that obviously it can only go forward unless a special permit is issued. Yes.
Okay, we'll go through the same question here, questions. Any representatives of the cities to speak regarding this application? Any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Any butters to the property present who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any butters to the property present who would like to speak in favor of? Any interested parties who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any interested parties who would like to speak in favor of? Haven't noted, there are none? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Any butters who would like to speak in opposition to this application? And keep in mind, really, the facts are pretty much the same because it's still looking at the small piece of roadway, we're not looking at the project. So anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Haven't noted, none? Mr. Haglund or Mr. Gary, do you have any questions?
No. I just want to make a comment. I wouldn't say necessarily no comments, other than I think the comments we heard for the first case are, are relevant for this case as well.
That is correct.
So I just want that to be clear.
Yeah, and just to reiterate, Ms. Haglund said it's pretty much transparent of what was stated regarding traffic, et cetera, really apply to the same case and the criteria will be looked at at the same time. If...
They own, they already own the property, that the butter that the road's going to be going through?
No, right now, the, the land is under agreement.
No, but I mean, it's, it's under a, it's a contiguous piece.
Yes.
That's my, I guess my question.
Yes, so the, the lot is, is shaped such that there's this small entrance way on, off of Clark that leads up into the back area. And then if you drive down, I believe it's Century Way. Once you get to the top where Century Way kind of angles to the left, it then breaks up into the back that way. And those are the only two portions of the land that actually are, have frontage on public ways. And, and again, if you, if you look at how the zoning lines for this particular area were drawn, it, it does raise a question, but again, the zoning line is such that the substantial portion of this tract of land in the back is, is all in the RR2 district. The small entrance ways off of Clark Street and then off of Century Way are in either the, both are in the, the GR3 district and a small portion on Clark Street is in the single-family residential 1 district.
Thank you.
I hope that answers your question.
Michael? Okay, we definitely do want to view this. Let's see if we can come up with a time. We'd have to probably do this on a... You can't do this Saturday, correct? You can do the following Saturday after we do...
I could do that.
Oh, I'll be?
I could do the 30th line with that other open space line, West Broadway at the same time, same day, too.
Yeah. Okay, we get them all on the 30th of October.
Correct.
Rachel, we're also going to, we'll schedule the West Broadway one that was continued. And what we'll do is follow up in time, probably somewhere around 10 o'clock, I would think. If that's acceptable, it'll be on, on Halloween Eve.
Sure. I think my trick-or-treat days are over.
Okay. And my statement is the same. If, if you get permission, if you're there and want to view it and there's permission, you may enter and we'll move forward and go through and get a quick explanation of, you know, what, what's been spoken about. And I think we'll clear details on the, the lot lines, et cetera, as we move forward. So do I hear a motion to, I'd like to hear a motion to continue this case?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Oh, sorry.
My name is Ryan, I live on Century Way. I was just wondering, what kind of permission are you referring to? What can, can you allow, do I have to walk through, et cetera?
Come up here. That's the podium we should use. What's your question?
My name is Ryan, I live on Century Way. I was wondering, you're saying you have to get permission to get access to you guys' walk-through? Is that what you guys are stating?
That's to go on the property that is owned by the applicant.
Correct, so...
They have to give permission to allow you to walk, to go on it.
Yes, sir, so it's that Saturday?
While we're viewing it.
Yep.
If they say yes, you can. You're not allowed really to contribute a lot of information, ask questions, et cetera. It's a viewing only.
Correct.
And if they deny it, you have to stay on city property or other private property, but not on their property.
Okay, that was a question.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, now, all right, so we'll, it'll be somewhere around 10 a.m. Could be between, I'll say between 10 and 10:30, depending how the others go. Do I, all in favor of the continuance?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else at this point you want to ask? No, Michael?
No.
Anything you would like to summarize, attorney?
An idea of when the next meeting would be? Okay, and how I would within the 90-day... Just, just make sure we pay attention to that so that if you need us to submit a...
October is 90 days.
A grant and extension of the time.
As long as we, yeah, this is a variance, so as long as we have enough time and Rachel has got the calendar and she watches that, she'll notify you if we're getting close. So we're getting close.
We're at it.
All right, so just, you just verify it and we'll, we'll send it.
I'll get that out to you tomorrow.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
October 19th is 90 days.
This is it. This is variance, though.
It's 90 days.
100 days.
100 days, whatever, but it's still...
I think it's 100 and... 100 days. But I know what...
That's right, it was 90 days.
I know what...
Yeah, and if you need to, you've got to have a letter signed by the applicant, whatever, giving us an extension and anything reasonable, not, I always say, try to get at least 60 days in there if we can.
Okay.
Because this is a larger project and a larger issue. Okay? All set, Rachel? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, then that... Oh, Mr. Chickwin?
You guys are going to take a site view. When you, are you going to make the determination to allow or not allow the zoning change at your next meeting?
Well, we're not changing zoning.
No, I meant allowing for zoning variance.
If the board, if we look favorably, all we're saying is you can use this section of the roadway.
Correct.
But we're not saying anything about the construction project.
I understand. I'm asking you when you would be, come to a decision.
The what?
When will you be coming to a decision?
For us?
Yes.
It won't happen till after we at least go down for the site visit? And then it probably, if there is a decision, it probably will be at the November meeting.
That's what I was looking for. And will Rachel be notifying everybody?
Rachel will do that.
Again, a little next meeting. It'll be on your next agenda.
Yeah, it'll be on the agenda. Now, it will not be mailed to you. Like you received probably an agenda for this.
Will be put into paper.
Because that's just as a continuance of the case.
Okay.
And that's why I recommend you call zoning and you can call a number of times and ask if we definitely have scheduled it for November 16th, would you say? November 16th meeting.
That's, you're going to discuss it at that next meeting. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, nothing further? You know, that's really, you know, the case is continued, so we won't be hearing any more tonight on any of the cases, so you're all free to go. I mean, the only thing we have left is sign some minutes and any new business. So we're going to take a five-minute recess. Thank you. Are we ready?
Yes. Are they, you ready? Okay.
Okay, we're reconvening. Any new business before the board?
Cool, the minutes.
I'll get there. Rachel, no new business?
Just the minutes.
Okay, the next item is the minutes and... Okay, we're going to, first of all, you all have had an opportunity to read the minutes. Are there any corrections, et cetera? No corrections noted, so do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Aye, approved. Any further business before the board?
Move to adjourn.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.